Want to call a roll?
Yes.
Hetske.
Here.
Bastian.
Here.
Danicourt.
Here.
Canower.
Here.
McCord.
Here.
Tidings.
Here.
Nurseinger.
Here.
Sangster.
Here.
Wizar.
And Valentine. So just for the record, this is the August twenty-sixth, twenty-fourteen work session of the Penn Field Planning. Zach, you want to go through our agenda?
Sure thing.
Are we gonna let Doug do that on this maiden voyage?
That'll be initiation. Uh, first off, we have minutes from July, I believe.
Yes, we do.
For everyone to go around and make sure we've had a good look at them, any issues that anyone saw while reviewing them?
Just one. There's one thing. Let me open it up.
Alright.
Do you have it?
I can't get there right now.
Is it under miscellaneous? Scroll way down. Oh, maybe not that far down.
You said way.
Well, way back.
Yeah, I don't need to do this, I can't see what I'm doing.
Okay, down. Down, down.
This part of Jackson Road still?
Yeah, stop. Okay.
Oh, this part?
Yeah. All comments or concerns? And concerns. Something like that.
Oh. Perfect. Sorry about that.
Sure.
Is that it?
That's it.
Did anyone else have any issues while reviewing the minutes?
Entertain a motion, Doug?
Just one question, I always have trouble opening these and some of your other text documents, is there any way we can just save these as Word documents or PDFs?
These aren't Word documents.
Okay.
They're Word, we don't have Word, we have Libre Office.
I can't, I have Word on my other computer and I can't seem to open these documents.
Which version of Word are you running?
Two thousand and nine?
Three? No, ten probably.
Two thousand and ten.
You shouldn't have an issue opening it.
I always have an issue, it doesn't recognize the file type that you're putting in there.
Uh, okay, we'll double check it when we make the next drop, make sure everything is a consistent, uh, file type.
It's, but it's supposed to be a Word file, otherwise it's supposed to be a Word file.
It should be a docx or a PDF or a, or a picture file, it's usually all we include.
Okay.
Um, but we'll double check things, uh, when we do the next drop for September. Does anyone else have any other issues when opening anything?
I have the same issue.
It's, it's a little clumsy moving around everybody.
No, I just tried to open this, meeting minutes with this Libre Office, and this is what I got.
Okay. I'll have to look at that. I'm gonna, Terry's gonna leave me his laptop so I can run a couple tests on it to make sure everything works okay, maybe we have to start saving it back as dot, as older Word documents or as PDFs.
PDFs.
Typically included, the Word documents in case, uh, you guys need to make any changes to anything while you're reviewing it.
You want to change it.
Um, so, we'll go back, maybe down convert them to older versions of Microsoft, maybe Libre Office works better with that. We can try that out. Okay?
That works.
Appreciate it.
No problem.
Will you entertain a motion to approve these minutes?
Aye. I'll make the motion.
Motion by Terry, second, you got a second?
I'll second.
Roseanne?
Alright.
Want to call the vote, Catherine?
Hetske.
Aye.
Bastian.
Upstate.
Danicourt.
Aye.
Canower.
Aye.
McCord.
Aye.
Tidings.
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have our tabled item from July, the application for fourteen sixty-nine Jackson Road. Um, since the last meeting, uh, there was a hefty paragraph there in the agenda with comments where we described all the updates that we've had so far. Um, Mark had gone to town board during their work sessions to discuss the dedication of the land, um, that the applicant was proposing to the town, mainly for the stormwater facility. Um, town board, after a couple work sessions, had their discussions, they're willing to accept that land as a special improvement district. Basically, residents who will occupy these homes, uh, they'll pay a certain amount, uh, in their taxes, uh, to help maintain this area that the town will, uh, now come under ownership for, so for mowing it, uh, taking care of the pond, stuff like that, or any improvements later on if they want to add a sign or maybe a fountain in there, those amounts will be adjusted as it goes forward if maintenance goes up. Um, but it, that cost will basically fall to the homeowners as part of their taxes during that for, uh, the life of that area. Um, and on the revised plans, you'll see that that dedication of land was extended along the south property line, mainly to even out the right of way. So now this area will all come under dedication for the town.
Does that strip go all the way back to Thousand Acre or no?
This is Thousand Acre right here.
Oh, okay.
So it does border it.
So there is access, okay.
Yep, access will be maintained as it is, the easement that is there remains. Um, they're even showing a little pull-off area here, uh, for that mowing access that they do, uh, back on their property yearly. Uh, so we've been working with them just on the, all the layout for that. Um, also part of the tabling resolution, we did, we asked for street trees on the site plan, they're showing their street trees. Uh, and also on the grading plan, we asked for, uh, what the landscaping's gonna look like in the retention pond area, and applicant has come back with revised plans to show that. Both of these plans, uh, we did give to Bruce Saretsky for him to review, look over the landscaping, and he's been in contact with us and the applicant to make sure everything is appropriate. Um, we got written responses to all agency review comments that were put out there, so from PRC, Monroe County Conservation Board, applicant provided responses, all that. And we finally, uh, as part of the drop from last Friday and also in preparation for the canceled public hearing meeting, um, we included an approval resolution template for you guys to look over. And the part two EAF draft, um, so all that's been included in the drop with those updates. If anyone has any questions or wants to discuss anything, now's the time to continue that.
Does anybody have any changes to the, the draft? Anybody have any comments, questions? Everybody comfortable with it?
I think Doug has a few questions from what was provided.
Yeah, I'm just not sure what, um, what kind of changes were made to the landscape plan, there were, uh, I think Bruce Saretsky reviewed this plan and still had comments about adding shrubs or trees around the pond.
Yeah, he wanted some, he wanted some more details in here, uh, some additional plant species.
Yeah.
Uh, he provided some, that, those details to the applicant. So we have to see a revised plan for that still, but they are working on it.
Okay, so we're still waiting for that, and, and he hasn't, uh, identified what the trees are, that was another comment.
Street trees.
Trees, yeah, the trees are shown, but they're not identified.
And that was a question from the applicant, they wanted to make sure they were gonna put the right ones in, so that was a question that was forwarded to Bruce, and he provided an answer for that, uh, for selection. Uh, that'll be shown on a revised landscape, or revised plans after.
Okay. Um, is the old easement going to remain, and this is like a ten or twenty foot wide easement?
Yep.
Along that?
It kinda, I'll get off this one.
I didn't see it on there, that's why I'm kind of wondering.
It will be...
That's the site plan that you're showing us, right?
Mm-hmm. Let me see if it made it on this one.
Could you, do you want me to comment, or would you ask?
Do you mind if I ask her?
Sure, go ahead.
Rick, I, I have the answer to it, do you know what's the plan you have that on right now? I know it was on the first round of plans.
It should be on the site plan, uh, definitely on existing conditions. I may have taken it off the site plan because our intent would be to abandon it as no purpose. Um, the easement is currently between the Nature Conservancy and this property owner. Um, now that the right of way is gonna extend along the order with the Thousand Acre Swamp or Nature Conservancy whole lakes, and we are providing a new easement, that easement really has no purpose. So, our position would be it should be abandoned, however, it really doesn't have to be, it's not hurting anything, it's just has no purpose. So we would see if it would be abandoned by the Conservancy, and we have correspondence with them right now suggesting that.
Okay. Anybody have any feelings on?
So that's between the landowner and the Conservancy? Not the town?
I don't believe so.
So?
But this will be a dedicated road?
As long as the Nature Conservancy is happy with it, I guess, shouldn't make any difference. Uh, I don't think we ever got an answer about where they get into the property there, along there, nobody seemed to know.
Right here.
No, I see what it proposed.
Oh, pre, currently?
Right, currently.
That's, that's practically the same location, that's about where the, one of the stone walls begins. And I met with Greg Sargeus of the Nature Conservancy on site, and we agreed on that location, which is approximately the current location of the access road.
Okay.
There's a, there's a, a rough farm trail there, on the Conservancy side.
EJ, a few years back, I don't know if anybody was here, maybe Terry was, we had a development on Shukrak, looking back up to the Thousand Acre Swamp. Remember the developer flew it on a helicopter?
Yes.
And we made them put up markers.
Right.
On the back of the property line, defining where the Conserv, where the Thousand Acre Swamp began, to help keep people out of it.
Right, and that's why this, uh, road was put on the south side of this.
Okay, so, so there's some barrier or something, so they know not to go in there and dump their leaves and brush, and the things landowners tend to do. So, okay.
Well, that's an interesting... I think we should delineate that somehow with some type of marker.
We were, we were provided a, an example of a marker by the planning manager, Jeff Fenway, there's a sign the town has prepared, that they, they had asked us to put in four by four posts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The sign was provided by the town, yeah, it's like a foreign sign.
Okay.
That was what.
I didn't know Jeff had provided that, but you guys already talked to him about that?
Yeah.
Now, let's put that in the resolution, though, that it goes, because that's a good idea, I mean, people go across the street and, I mean, I, I like the idea that the road is on the south side, so people don't extend their backyards, but that doesn't mean that they're not gonna just dump their yard waste over there.
But you still have lot. Lot ten or eleven, whatever that is, nine? The?
Bottom right?
Yeah, well, lower left.
This one?
That one, fronts on...
Yeah, this one, I have both those two.
Actually, yeah, both of them do.
They have side over here, yeah.
Um...
So put the signs on the hundred feet or something.
Yeah, whatever the practice is.
Yeah, it is, isn't that number five in the resolution? Is it? I think it's covered.
I believe it is in there, yeah. Let me jump back to it.
Yes, it is.
It is in. It's a lot of conditions.
For the satisfaction of the town engineer, so.
Yep, alright, good. So is that, uh, Thousand Acre Swamp also on the west? The west line?
The existing conditions map, or the subdivision map, which are on there, I'm not sure, I think so.
Yes.
Okay. So all, all along that side also. Um, I, I didn't, there's probably an answer in here somewhere, but how is lot twelve being maintained, is my question? Um, that's that hole, is that?
That's...
That's a dedicated to the town and the special use district.
Right, so the, the town is gonna be maintaining it?
The town will be dedicating that.
People pay extra taxes in that area to cover the cost of that.
Maintaining, sorry.
Yep, okay. And they didn't see a light pole, um, at the intersection on any of the plans, but that's called for also.
I would imagine that the government of this nature would have some markings.
I don't remember if we had that, no, I don't take exception to that.
Are they gonna put up any signs saying such and such development?
Currently, currently we haven't made an application for a sign, that, that would be a separate application in the future if they choose to, but currently we're not proposing.
Okay. Okay.
Um, I didn't, uh, see who is taking care of the, uh, center island in the cul-de-sac either. Go down to the other end, there's kind of a, what would be like a lawn or something area there. Is that the same arrangement?
That, under dedicated road, that was falling to us, I believe.
So the town would maintain that?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Your application, you wanna move to, we gotta do the part two EAF first.
Okay, do you folks see any problems with the EAF? Fine?
Yeah, I'm going through it.
Okay, I will move to accept the, uh, EAF.
You're authorized with the sign. Somebody want a second?
I'll second.
Canower?
Okay. Hetske.
Aye.
Bastian.
Upstate.
Danicourt.
Aye.
Canower.
Aye.
McCord.
Aye.
Tidings.
Aye.
Okay. Well, the resolution?
With the corrections that we need to make.
I will, uh, move to accept the resolution.
Second?
Second.
Hetske.
Aye.
Bastian.
Upstate.
Danicourt.
Aye.
Canower.
Aye.
McCord.
Aye.
Tidings.
Aye.
Okay.
We'll be in touch, Rick.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay.
Alright. So that was our one and only tabled item. We do have three miscellaneous items to talk about. Um, first one, I'll pull it up on the screen, is, oh, I can start here. This is, uh, Nick Melli's site, Empire Self Storage on Empire Boulevard, area crossing water. Um, he's come to us with a request to modify the site plan that was approved in two thousand and eight. And, give me a minute, I will pull those up for you, they were included in the drop. And they are... I'll start with the proposed. So... Actually, I will not start with proposed, I will start with the approved. And this is turned. Which way is this turned, okay, I gotta turn this, one second. Okay. So in two thousand and eight, uh, the approved plan called for twenty-three buildings, a total of sixty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty square feet, and the entire site broken out into phased development. We had some buildings up front, and he began, he completed, well, began phase one with this one building that's out here now. Three? Three, that's right, sorry. The aerial is outdated. Um, so, there are three buildings out there now, um, and on the proposed plan that he provided, this is how they're laid out. Sorry, can't really see those, there they are.
Okay.
Um, to, the modifications, I gotta zoom out again. Wants to change the orientation of the buildings by ninety degrees. Um, basically, the way the, the grading is on site, this would kind of accommodate for that more, um, less challenging to put the buildings up, um...
Same number of buildings yet?
I believe the building numbers could potentially change once everything's all built out.
About square footage?
Square footage? Square footage, it hasn't hit the max square footage yet, um, so he still has some room to play there. Basically, uh, this is just the phase two side of it, he, on the original, I'm sorry I'm fl, going back and forth, the original had phase one, two, three, and a potential four, um, approved on that site plan in two thousand and eight. So again, there are three buildings up in phase one, and we're calling for potentially five buildings in the back, um, all forty by two hundred structures as shown on his plan.
Excuse me. That's subject to change. The size.
So they are subject to change?
Well, he added a letter from Costage that, we're not sure exactly the size, depends on the configuration of the property.
Okay.
The size may change as we go along. Uh, forty by two hundred probably be the maximum size.
Okay.
Okay, so forty by two hundred is the maximum size?
Forty by two hundred maximum, um, I guess the, the big thing is, again, the orientation of the buildings compared to, uh,
What was approved?
What was previously approved, uh, the building numbers, you know, again, it could be up to five as they had, they provide a letter of intent along with this, um, that was included as well, kind of described, uh, the situation. Again, the, the building number did change, the sizes changed, but again, they have not hit the maximum square footage from that original approval.
And the biggest reason for this is the topography of the site?
To my understanding, uh, that's what we were told.
Yes, it's, there's probably about four foot you would have to fill, and then that would, not only, if we raised up the one end, it would be uneven with our existing driveway, and then if you cut down the other end, since the property used to be, uh, dumped, you could get into ashes and walls and those, and then you have unstable ground to work on.
So this way you'd have a nice, relatively modest grade going uphill or downhill?
It would be going uphill from...
Uphill.
Uphill. And, uh, not have to do all the cut and filling.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Does this still stay on phase one, phase two, phase three, or does this some culture phase?
Seven, seven phase one.
Is it a phase one?
So far, yeah, we've only put three buildings up.
Okay.
Um, in two years we start the first building, so we got three up, and we'd like to put another one up this year if possible.
Mm-hmm.
We argue a lot of activity, uh, and if we don't want to lose that business, we can help it.
Is there a buffer line, Zach, to, what's that line?
This one?
Point, yeah.
Agit pavement.
Okay. Is the, is the footprint basically the same?
There were, there are...
It's just the orientation?
Pre, yes, uh, pretty much, the ori, the, the footprint's pretty much the same. If you want, I can pull up that, you want to go back to the approved one, or?
No, that's...
Does anybody have an issue with this?
Um, reconfigure the lighting to match the layout, there's no poles or other?
Well, there are, oh, yeah, there are lights there, we are, we are lighting each building as we build it.
So they're gonna have to reconfigure it? Okay, it's that out of the building, it's out of pole?
The lighting is on, we do lighting on the buildings.
Yeah, well, the driveway is also lit up there.
I don't have a problem with the concept of it.
What are we looking at on the writing inside there, all those numbered units?
Those are, I think, RV and boat storage slots.
There are spaces for campers and boat storage.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not a building, then?
No.
No.
Just footprints?
Mm-hmm. Just markings.
Terry, guys?
Nope, I'm good.
Doug? Roseanne?
I think it looks fine.
Doug? Doug?
Looks good.
Okay.
Okay, so again, this is a modification of site plan, we'll follow up with them, with procedures for that, but this board is...
Yeah, we probably should make a motion to accept the suggested
Yes.
modification to the site plan.
Are they gonna commit on sketch for September?
For this?
Yeah.
No, this is already approved, they just want to flip the...
Find myself for sketch.
This would be...
No, sketch, we do have a sketch plan, but Hatch Road's preliminary files, yeah, separate, not this.
This would be it.
Yeah, this isn't, this is just internal, but they're bringing, we have to bring it to the board as to modification to what was approved.
So, somebody wants to move to accept this, or Doug?
I will not. Does that matter?
Canower, seconds?
Okay, Hetske.
Aye.
Bastian.
Aye.
Danicourt.
Aye.
Canower.
Aye.
McCord.
Aye.
Tidings.
Aye.
Okay.
So we'll follow up at, uh, later this week, hopefully with the, uh, with some steps on how to proceed from here. We'll follow up with an email or phone call, um, to show you how to proceed from here, now that we got the approval to modify the site plan, okay?
Well, it is modified, you want to modify more?
No, to accept your mod, to accept your modification.
No, we just, we just approved it.
Oh, okay, so we gotta let Costage do whatever you want to do with it.
Correct. Correct.
That's fine.
You're awesome.
Okay.
We want it, the problem we have right now is, in order for us to get another building up, we gotta start moving it right now, or it won't be till next year, so that, that's the situation, because it's coming out of Wisconsin.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay.
So whatever we have to do, we'll do as fast as possible.
Okay.
Good.
We'll try and get you, we'll try and keep you on that timeline.
We're members now, can we have, what was that, we need a couple more of those laptops.
We're members.
I don't know if you want me?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you don't want those.
Alright.
Good seeing you.
All done, guys?
Take care, guys.
Alright, thanks, thank you.
Thanks, guys, have a good night.
You too.
Alright. Hogan Road?
Hogan Road. This is, um, Ed Summerhay's brought this to us, it's a, just a resub, homeowner would like to move the lot lines on his two properties. Um, this is what, hang on, what was existing, Hogan's over here, he's got, these are the two subject parcels. Big one, little ones. This was the line, they want to reconfigure it, this way we're not creating any lots, we're just moving lot lines.
So still two lots, just?
Yep, just a different area for tax purposes, he would like to reconfigure the sizes of his lots.
I'll make the motion for it.
But there's no questions.
So the change, that remaining lot, it's actually larger?
Yeah, basically, small, that wa, what was the smaller lot is now becoming the larger lot and vice versa.
Okay.
Well, lot R one, where's the access?
Off Hogan Road?
Off Hogan, they both front on Hogan.
So if, another road on the top there?
Yep.
I'm playing...
Sorry, sorry, I should have had that there as an orientation as well.
So you have access to that back lot from Pike Road, a lot on the right, or isn't that one of the lots being reconfigured?
This is, the, yeah, this lot?
Yeah.
And this lot.
Okay.
So, you still have over here, you'll still touch over here on both sides, and they'll both have frange on both sides.
Oh, so the dotted line is where the old lot line is, and it's being removed, so they'll have access in two rows?
Yeah. Yep. Yep. Okay.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, Hetske.
Hang on, that was...
Bastian.
Aye.
Danicourt.
Aye.
Canower.
Aye.
McCord.
Aye.
Tidings.
Aye.
Alright, moving right along?
I have the mylar for you to sign as well.
Okay.
Lastly? And...
Hortons.
Yeah. I don't know where I put those pictures. So we have a complaint from a homeowner, um, on Bronson Drive, let me just jump to...
This is about the lights, right?
This is about, yep, some, they're noting, they're complaining of, uh, excessive light coming from vehicles in the drive through the Newtum Hortons on Penn Field Road. Let's see if I can...
Yeah, I looked on Google, those, um, from the roadway, the closest house, it's four hundred and twenty-five feet. Yeah, I looked on Google, those, um, from the roadway, the closest house, it's four hundred and twenty-five feet.
Yeah, I believe it's-
That house?
This house, uh, so you know, there's less landscaping that would be buffering it, uh, if you give me that, I can pull up the original site plan for, the approved site plan for Tim Hortons.
It's gotta be that house.
Yep, um, they, they did provide photos, which is-
That didn't tell you too much.
I'll pull them up from the drop.
The photos didn't tell you too much?
Well, it shows the backyard.
Yeah, and they're not all, they're not all at night either.
Yeah. I think the aerial is just from Google is-
Yeah, better.
Yeah.
So, wow, this is really dark, uh, if we, I, unfortunately I can't turn the lights off.
Is that Tim Hortons there?
Yeah, this is Tim Hortons here. A little fuzzy.
Just the lights of the building, though?
No, it's-
Car lights coming through the drive-through.
I don't think they were able to capture a photo of a car actually coming through there.
Because I went by there, the lights, I mean, the lights of the building and, uh, a lot of the approvals are definitely probably those lights.
No, but what they'll, I guess what they experience is, any of the traffic that's in the drive-through has the potential to shine through to their ba- to the back of their house, through the windows, um.
Or maybe when people are making a right out of there, it's gonna sweep across.
When they're making a right, but that's, but that's, that's, that's relatively quick, that's a matter of seconds. I'm guessing that if there, if there's a line here-
Yeah.
Probably they're waiting there for-
Correct.
How late are, how late are they open?
I think that'd be in the morning, though.
They open-
Ten, eleven?
Eleven P M, I think.
Yeah, and they open-
And they open probably five.
Five for business, I think. I know they ask for extended hours during the, uh, approval, during the application process, Tim Hortons, there we go.
So they're coming to the planning board and asking us to resolve this?
They're asking if there's anything that the board can do, um, regarding adding some landscaping or, uh, working with Tim Hortons to try and remedy the problem.
So.
Is there any room to put some landscaping opposite?
Potential, potential solution would be to approach, because we have no real way of-
We have no leverage.
If, if we, yeah, if we're inclined to try to force them to do something, we don't actually have the-
Authority.
Authority to do so, but we potentially could ask if they'd be willing to plant a couple shrubs or something. There was a, uh, one of the plant, one of the landscaped islands are, uh, out in front.
This area here?
Could be an area where they could put a couple of, uh,
Yep, right where-
Juniper or boxwoods or, you know, maybe you could jump in here, Doug, to see if, uh, what might look decent and, uh, shield the building from, you know, we wanna worry about site distance and all that, but
Decorative fence.
It's not gonna cost money.
Small plantings, you saw four-foot fence would probably block those lights.
No fence.
Yeah, you know, but a fence, but yeah, just some kind of a shrub that's three or four-foot height that'll block the headlights.
Yeah, like a short hedge.
Hicksy or something, or-
AJ, they go out there and speak with the man, or the owner, actually.
They was out there looking, you know, he wasn't unaware of any type of complaints, but he said he was more than willing to speak with someone,
you know, within reason to try to resolve whatever the issue is, and I didn't know at the time, was just the headlights, but he was willing to discuss with somebody from the town.
Yeah, so if there's, you know, two, three shrubs or might, might do a nice job.
Probably more like-
Zoom out of there a little bit back, just to show.
Sure. Five or six shrubs, but that area where the lawn.
Oh, you have it, um-
Which way would you, oh, yeah.
Oriented north-south, the way most normal people would look at it.
This is going this way.
It comes southbound from the side.
Not, not the sideways people.
I can turn it, I'm just going with the text. Would you like me to turn it?
Yeah, counterclockwise, ninety degrees, there we go.
Uh, I can't read it.
Now everyone turn your head.
So down there in the bottom left, there's a tree right there, and so maybe-
There's ample space here, uh, we've driven past as, as staff as well to look at the site.
Well, are, are we sure it's coming up from the drive-through they're complaining, or is it drive-through and driveway?
That's a good question.
Well-
Cause if it's the driveway, then you're gonna, the homeowner's gonna be, you know, they're gonna have to plant a buffer in the backyard.
There's nothing you can do about that.
Right.
That is definitely something that they could do, they could put trees or, uh, some type of screening device in their, in their, on their own property.
Yep.
Did they say drive-through in the complaint?
I believe it's been, been primarily the drive-through, but again,
In my property.
Yeah.
If, again, if it is, if it comes back and they say that they're complaining more about, or in addition to it, um, about exiting the site, again, there's not much, we can't do anything about that on their site for that, it would fall to the homeowner.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and they would have to take care of their property and go ahead and probably plant some buffer to it, or do a fence or something, um.
If we make a good faith effort and the owners willing-
Just ask the question, see if they're willing to put a couple bushes in there and-
Put some screening in there for us.
You know, hopefully everybody's happy at the end of the day with that, you know?
And if not, well.
You can always plant trees.
Right. So moved.
Yeah, we don't, we don't need to vote on this, but we just, I need the board's opinion on this, so that, um,
It'd probably be good for you-
We can follow up as staff.
For you or somebody to kinda go out there and kinda line it up with, with what they're worried about, and see if, maybe even more shrubs along that edge would-
That's what we tried to tackle, now granted, this has changed-
Yeah.
From what it was, um, but looking, wow, zoomed out way too much. If this is our little island now up here, and we're talking about this homeowner who's taking this picture from this angle, um.
Right, it's more or less- Mm-hmm. I can see where a car that's a little farther back might not be screened by just a couple shrubs in the front, might have to go down that property line a little bit.
You're looking more over here as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
So who's gonna talk to the Tim Hortons?
That communication will start with us, uh, we can speak to the manager of the site, as well as the representative from Tim Hortons who handled the application. Uh, we'll start from there, we'll go with the board's recommendations about what could be handled on site, and see if we can remedy the issue.
Yeah, I don't wanna, you know, become a big brother with, uh-
We don't wanna put, we, we can't force Tim Hortons to do something that, you know, again, has it wasn't on their original approval, um, but it sounds like from your visit, Terry, that they're pretty willing to work with us, even the manager who's there now.
Right, the owner was the owner.
The owner.
Yep. Yeah, something that's within reason.
Reason, right. Right. Not talking about putting out the Great Wall of China, literally.
Right, okay.
Um, so-
If you do that, that'd be terrific.
We appreciate that.
Alright, we can do that. Get that moving.
Call me, I'll go with you again.
Alright, um, that was my last miscellaneous, the only, the only other thing I wanted to ask was attendance for September. Make sure that we're all still good for September eleventh for our public hearing. We got those two items, sketch plan for mobile, gas, for the gas station at two fifty-four forty-one, and Hatch Road preliminary final.
As far as I know, I'm good for it, please, cause you don't play.
Something, yeah. Okay.
Good, flying back the day before, just to be-
I'm crazy.
Thank you, we greatly appreciate that. Everyone else is all set?
Yes.
Okay, uh, with that-
We done?
We can call this meeting to a close.
Alright, I guess we will adjourn. Thanks for coming.
Alright, thank you.